Good evening, everyone. Happy Valentine's Day. I am sorry for those of you that had to be here not with your loved ones. For those of you on CDBG, to use the phrase of a friend of mine, it's nice to see you come here to beg for money tonight and then go home and beg for forgiveness from your spouses. I didn't mention any names. All right. So let's show the meeting of February 14th, 2024 started, and all council members are present tonight. And tonight, I'm going to have the, an old friend of mine do the pledge of allegiance, and he doesn't even know yet. I'm going to call on Battalion Chief Harley Wallace. I love doing that to you guys. And the invocation tonight will be given by Gary Lawton, who has dedicated the past 13 years to shepherding the Calvary Chapel community as its senior pastor. Calvary Chapel Santee was established as a fellowship of believers in Jesus Christ. Their supreme desire is to know Christ and conform to His image by the power of the Holy Spirit. Calvary Chapel's steadfast commitment to serving the needs of Sante spans an impressive 35 years, providing worship services on Wednesday, Saturday, and Sunday at their facility at 10920 Summit Avenue. Gary is a devoted husband and father of four, blessed with 13 grandchildren and two great-grandsons, and embodies the spirits of family warmth with the congregation. The church's ongoing prayers for the city council and its members reflect a deep sense of community connection for which we express gratitude, and we thank you very much for those prayers. So thank you for being here this evening, and we ask to pray for the United States of America, the state of California, and of course, Santee and this council. Please rise for the invocation, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Please pray with me. Heavenly Father, we want to thank you for the blessings that come from living here in America, certainly in California and in Santee. We thank you for being loving and gracious and patient, even when we least deserve it. We ask you to bless our military, our police, and firemen, and civil authorities that maintain our freedoms and protect us and our rights to worship you. We pray for the mayor and the council tonight. Thank you for their service and sacrifices and hard work they do on our behalf. We ask, Lord, that you bless them personally, their homes, their families, and their businesses. May they enjoy the peace of knowing you and your forgiveness. Tonight, we ask that you'd give them a listening year, a genuine understanding of the needs of our people and city, and the wisdom to govern our city and provide real solutions for the issues that are before them tonight. Lord, guide and bless them in their agenda. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Thank you.
... United States of America, and a true republic for which it stands, one nation under God, invincible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Chief. Well, this is going to be interesting. This is the first time we've done something like this where the council's not going to make a presentation tonight, however, we have people coming from the community to do that. And so, Pat, where are you at? Who's going to lead all this?
I'm here, but it's Jill and Connie.
Okay, come on up. And please take the, go to the lectern. And everybody's going to hear their story, so that's why I'm not going to say anything about it ahead of time.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor Minto. I'm Connie Charles. I'm a resident of Santee and a member of Santee United Methodist Church. And I'm here and joined by fellow members of Santee United Methodist Church and another member who's going to tell you a story. In order to give a shout out and a huge, huge vote of thank you to five particular first responders who came to the church on Saturday, January 13th, and went above and beyond the call of duty. And I have certificates of each of them. I think I'll read their names now, and then Jill will tell you her story, the story.
Do you want them to come up and get their certificates or afterward?
Oh, we left them over there.
Oh, you did?
We can do it in two ways. You can do the story and everything.
Okay.
As long as I give them.
Well, you're telling the story, I'll get them. And then we can call them forward.
Sounds good. Thank you.
The names are Captain Adam Daniels, Engineer Curtis Wilson, sorry, firefighter Jeremy Carroll, firefighter paramedic Cody Satkowski, and firefighter paramedic Nicholas Sarau. And Jill's going to tell you why they came to Santee United Methodist Church on Saturday morning.
Thank you. My name is Jill Linder. I'm also a resident of Santee and a member of Santee United Methodist Church. And on the 13th, I was at the church doing something against my husband's wishes. I was helping to take down Christmas decorations on a ladder, and my husband had warned me beforehand that it was dangerous and that the decorations I was taking down could very easily pull me off the ladder. Well, my husband was right. And unfortunately, yes, I can. Jason, you were right.
Public record.
So, and I will, I'm a crier, so I'll try to hold it together here. I came down about 10 feet. So I landed on my feet and then came down on my left side, and I ended up with a broken humerus, a damaged foot, and a broken humerus and about 20 pieces. So the firemen, luckily, Station 4 is right at the end of the street from Santee United Methodist Church, so they were there very quickly. They attended to me in such a professional but very caring manner because it was incredibly scary. I couldn't move. It was just, it was a very traumatic experience. And so, they got me in the splint, gave me the pain meds, got me off to the hospital. And I learned later that the guys who had stayed behind, I'm actually not sure if the guys from the ambulance came back, I doubt it, but they stayed behind to finish the job of taking the decorations down. So they're very high, they're very heavy, they require a very heavy ladder, so it was just very meaningful to us at the church that they were willing to help us do that.
It's completely spontaneous, as I understand it. They said, okay, we'll do the rest. And they did it, and they came in and did, and they are high up. So we are very grateful and we feel very special.
I'm sorry, can you speak into the mic just?
We're very grateful and we're very appreciative of all they did. And I would like to give them each their certificate now. And let's have you come forward.
So while they're coming forward, one more time, who was right again?
My husband, Jason Linder, was right.
There is, there is a certificate that's for the fire station, which is Station Number 4 for itself, and there's the certificate for Adam Daniels. And that one is for Curtis Wilson, and Jeremy Carroll, Cody Satkowski, and Nicholas Sarau. Thank you, thank you, thank you. And by the way, I'm going to write this up and see if I can get it in the Chamber Magazine.
Great. Well, thanks. Congratulations, guys. Thanks for all the hard work. Wilson.
We love the story. Like, we love the story of, you know, obviously them coming and assisting and helping. I love even more the fact that they stayed and took down the decorations. That's pretty cool. Did you guys have to use a lift or?
Curtis, come back up here. Adam, you come back up here real quick?
You can't get cookies.
It's okay. Whose call was it to take down the decorations? Yours as a captain?
It was mine, yes.
Is yours?
Don't be so shy all of a sudden.
You got two weeks in a row with combinations, so.
Thanks, Jill. And we wish you a speedy recovery.
Yep.
And Len, good job. All right. That takes us to our consent calendar. Are there any items to be added, deleted, reordered? And Councilmember McNellis?
Not for me, sir.
Vice Mayor?
No, sir.
Councilmember?
None for me.
Councilmember?
No.
I have none?
Motion to approve.
City manager?
No, sir.
City attorney?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Any speaker slips?
No, sir.
I have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, please vote.
We're going to go with that. Okay.
Vice Mayor Trotter, will you please lock in your vote? Now...
Do you have a hammer?
Councilmember Koval and Mayor Minto have to do it again. Mayor Minto, can you lock in your vote?
Yeah.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. That takes us to item number eight, which is a public hearing to assess community development needs and to solicit proposals for program year 2024.
Mayor Minto, non-agenda?
Public comment.
I'm sorry. Thought we just did that. Non-agenda public comment. Any speaker slips?
Yes, sir. First speaker I have is Robert Othout.
Sorry, I wasn't trying to keep you all from talking, I just got ahead of myself.
Good evening, council. My name is Robert Othout. Last April, there is a change in major use permit for the property located at 9585 Carlton Hills Boulevard, the community Montessori, run by Element Education. I'm here again tonight because I feel that since I brought this to attention last April and last December, I've highlighted my issues and they haven't been addressed in a timely manner. So, to me, a business doing, a company doing business in a city should respect the neighbors and the city. And over the past 10 months, there has been no reaching out, hey, this is what we're doing, we want to work with you, we want to work with the city, get your issues resolved. To me, respect, approach somebody, we're doing this. To me, I don't feel respected in this manner right now. So, another point that was brought up on the April meeting was the council advised them, like, oh, you're building a place structure. Please reach out to the community, let them know, send them a letter, let them know what you're doing, engage. That was never, that was never, that never took place to this day. So, I'm here to request the council to help oversee my concerns and issues and hopefully get them addressed very soon. Thank you.
Senate manager, can we, this is the second time in less than two months that we've heard about this. Can we follow up a little deeper?
Yes, sir. Staff will be doing that.
Thank you.
Can you let us know before the next council meeting, what the outcome is of that?
I can provide a response to the city council in a memo form.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
The next speaker I have is Robert German.
Happy Valentine's Day. I brought a couple of flyers. They're both two-sided, so we'll start with this. My name's Robert German, and I am spokesperson for Citizens Against Gillespie's Expansion Low Flying Aircraft. And on the backside is a video that we have produced that is in regards to the endangerment finding that the EPA has determined on leaded fuel. It gives the history, it gives the progress, and then the final decision by the EPA and how it affects us and our families. The next flyer I have is called, let's see, California Senate Bill 654, and it was proposed by Gillespie Field Development Council and facilitated, if you will, by Brian Jones, the senator here in Santee, District 79, I think. Yeah. And it explains what Gillespie Field and Senator Jones and the legislature is doing concerning airports. And how it affects Gillespie Field is that they want to turn the jurisdiction over to the San Diego County Regional Airport Authority, I think I already talked. And we would like to discuss this. We, hopefully, we get to, and we'd like to keep the control of Gillespie Field local. But the motivation on it is that they are actually closing or moving and consolidating in California general aviation airports like Gillespie Field. Simply put, they're toxic. The land is too valuable for planes just to go around in circles. And we agree. I mean, they can fly, but where they land and take off should be up for debate. And so those are my two flyers. And if anybody has any questions, I'm here to answer them the best to my ability. And we do have members, we're up to about 250 people. We have members in Santee. A lot of the members we have are in, what is it, Black Canyon Ranch, Black Stallion Ranch, right at the base of Gillespie Field? Or, excuse me, Rattlesnake Mountain? It goes around.
Yeah.
Black Estates or? Black Horse. I got black right. And so if there's, you know, anybody has any questions, I'll do the best I can. And I will be coming back if that's okay. And I'm going to try and do a slideshow because I think it brings the community in. And I'm just here to educate. Like I said, the FAA's job is to launch and land aircraft. You're the neighbor next to Gillespie. The county owns it. El Cajon is involved. They're the ones who actually run the airport, contrary to what the FAA and the pilots like to tell you. But I will also present material to that effect, too. Okay. Thank you.
The next speaker is Mike Root. And you should have his hand out.
Thank you, Mr. Hall, for all the assistance you've given me at times. And actually, thank you to the whole council for something that I never thought would impact me. I was at a meeting once for something unrelated, and some beekeeping advocates wanted the regulations relaxed, and y'all didn't buy the science of what they were saying. And sure enough, eventually, a neighbor put in a bunch of bee hives, and our whole neighborhood was inundated, and because you hadn't changed the code, the city was able to deal with it. So thank you for that insight. I'm here primarily to talk about fire hazard conditions in Sky Ranch. Defensible space from fire is called fuel modification zones. They have not been maintained in Sky Ranch. If you look at the first photo, that is an emergency access road on the south side of Sky Ranch. Bill's holding up a photo for everyone to see. That's primarily the one I want to show you because it's the best example. Santee has regulations regarding fire apparatus road, which this is one. Per code, it's to be approved to Zone 1 standards, 50 feet from each side of the road. Clearly, that is not maintained. The irrigation has been buried by the brush. In places, the brush is 15, 20 feet high, didn't take out a ruler. I don't know how someone would escape if we had a fire in that area. There's a, there's a lot of fuel over there.
Excuse me, Michael?
Sure.
The cardboard that the gentleman's holding up, is it the same photographs that we have here? Okay, I just want to make sure we got the same thing. Thank you. Thank you.
The, that fire apparatus road is also, is also specified in the CCNRs to be maintained and fuel modified. You can see brush is protruding into the road. It's not just, it's supposed to be 50 feet off to the side, it's actually protruding into the road. It hasn't been cleared in years. In some cases, dead trees are standing. If you go through those additional photos, there are the other three, the other two access roads and even the main entrance, there are two dead trees. I've struggled to get fuel modification addressed by my house, and in fact, I have sued the HOA at great expense. It would cost very little for the city to deal with this. You just need to enforce the code. I appreciate the conservative approach. This is not conservative. This is crazy. This is negligent. This is, this is not safe. I made a records request based on the, and based on the response, I received basically my own email back. Apparently, nothing's being done. Generally, what needs to happen is the fire department needs to do inspections, city staff needs to respond, and the city council should encourage that. There's other issues like prohibited plants, but my time is up. Thank you.
I do have a question. These issues here, would they be addressed through the abatement process? Would your guys handle that, or who would handle that?
The fire chief and the marshal are aware of this, and they're working on it, is the short answer. So, I mean, it is a constant process. It's, you know, part of the fire department's job to go out and do the inspections. Some of it would be handled with abatement, but that's typically more, you know, kind of...
No, I guess maybe I'm not using the right terminology, but we have a company that goes out and...
No, but I mean, that's, that's really more the kind of hillsides and weeds and things like that. This is more, we need to enforce this in terms of the CCNRs.
Okay.
So, I mean, I think the fire chief can speak to it, but he's on it, basically.
Okay. We need to get an update, though.
I would like, I brought this up, what, two months ago? So...
As soon as you can get some deliverable on that, give us an update, and please send out a memo. I appreciate that.
Well, I mean, we can just copy you on what's going to be going out.
That's fine, just as long as we know what's happening.
Right.
And that way, we can address it, whatever.
You would not be now, I appreciate it.
Sure. I think that's, that would be nice. Yes.
Michael, I'll let you know.
Thank you.
No further speakers, sir.
All right. Okay. Can we go on to the public hearing now? Let's see. Public hearing, number eight. Hearing to assess community development needs and to solicit proposals for program year 2024 community development block grant or CDBG and home program funding consistent with the consolidated plan and finding the action is not a project subject to the California Environmental Quality Act. And this is for information first review tonight, right? Thanks, Bill.
So, good evening, Mayor Minto, Vice Mayor Trotter, and city council members. This is the first of two public hearings to identify community needs and to prioritize federal community development block grant funding for the upcoming program year. During this time, this first meeting, staff will highlight the CDBG program requirements and give an overview of the applications submitted by nonprofit service providers. It is at this meeting that applicants may address the city council with the merits of their applications. Staff will return on February 28th to ask for direction on activities to be funded and will be included in the city's next annual action plan. The objective of the CDBG program is to improve housing, public services, capital infrastructure, and economic opportunities for low and moderate income persons. Eligible uses of CDBG funds are divided into three categories: public services, program administration, and public facilities or infrastructure. HUD has not announced the city's allocation for program year 2024. Therefore, staff has estimated that the city will receive roughly $306,000 for planning The home program provides funds to states and localities to provide housing opportunities for low-income persons. Historically, the city has utilized home funds for the first-time homebuyer program. The city participates in a consortium with the cities of Carlsbad, Encinitas, La Mesa, San Marcos, Vista, and the county of San Diego for federal home monies to fund affordable housing programs and to administer these programs. During calendar year 2023, no first-time homebuyer loans were completed, largely due to the high housing, high housing costs combined with high interest rates. In fiscal year 2022/23, only five loans were completed, unfortunately, countywide. Chart on this slide shows the total, how the total estimated amount for program year 2024 funding was calculated. Carryforwards and interest earns totaling $5,249 are added to the estimated grant allocation amount to make a total amount of funding available, $311,752. This table is in the staff report and lists the three activity categories which may be funded. HUD regulations place caps on, or funding limits, on activity categories. The cap calculations are based on the annual allocation and program income but exclude prior-year carryforwards. Public services is capped at 15% of the allocation. Administrative activities, which includes fair housing, is capped at 20%, but public infrastructure/facilities is not capped. A notice of funding availability, or ANOFA, was published, posted on the city's website and emailed to interested parties on December 8th, 2023. Seven requests were received by the January 8th deadline. The Meals on Wheels application was submitted late, but has been included in this agenda item for the city council's consideration. This slide shows the six applications that were received for public service activities. The amounts requested and the amounts these applicants were funded in the current year, if they were. A summary of the applications received in each activity category can be found in Attachment 2 to the staff report. I should note that Attachment 2 states that the Santee Santas Foundation had submitted a late application when actually it was not them, it was Meals on Wheels. Staff's acceptance of the late application was based on Meals on Wheels request and is not prohibited by any HUD regulation or city CDBG policy. However, if the city council provided direction to prohibit future CDBG applications, staff could revise the policy. I should also note that a copy of each application is included in Attachment 3 to the staff This slide shows the proposed administrative activities, the amounts requested, and the amounts allocated in the current program year. A copy of the CSA San Diego, which is our fair housing provider, is include, application is included in Attachment 3 to the staff report. This slide shows the proposed public facility-infrastructure funding. The proposed $189,442 or $204,442, dependent upon if the Home of Guiding Hands project is funded, to be allocated towards program year 2024 public infrastructure would be used for the next phase of the citywide ADA pedestrian ramp project. And the Home of Guiding Hands application is also included in Attachment 3 to the staff report. So staff recommends the city council open the public hearing, receive testimony, and continue the public hearing to February 28th. On February 28th, the city council will decide on the funding requests and amounts. Finally, staff will return in April with a draft annual action plan for program year 2024 that incorporates the direction provided by the city council on the 28th. You, I should note that you all should have received a letter from Elder Help of San Diego, which unfortunately is not able to attend tonight's meeting based on a recent flooding of their administrative offices in Murphy Cannon and this toll that's had on their overtime and staff. But this concludes my report, and I'm available to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Let's go ahead and take speakers. Thanks, Bill.
The first speaker I have is Tanya Hendricks. Reminder, if you all can keep it to three minutes, please.
Good evening, Mayor Minto, Vice Mayor Trotter, and city council members. I'm Tanya Hendricks, and I'm the president of Santee Santas Foundation. This year, Santee Santas is respectfully requesting a $5,000 share of funds from the CDB grant. As the city council has supported our community services efforts for many years, so have we supported the Santee community. we supported the Santee community. We ensure the Christmas spirit by providing food and good cheer to many families and individuals during the holiday season. This year, we served 208 qualifying families. That was 50 more families than we have served in the previous year, for a total of about 770 individuals. 408 of those individuals were children who received books, toys, or a gift card, stocking stuffers, and a family game. In addition, 200 poinsettia plants were distributed to many of the isolated seniors living in mobile home parks and senior residences throughout the community. Santee Santas has an emergency fund program which offers one-time assistance to Santee residents for unexpected emergency situations such as residential fires. This year, we assisted four families who experienced loss due to the fires. We are very proud of our 70-plus years of service to Santee residents. We ask that you remember our service record as you negotiate the amounts allotted to each good cause. Please know that we are appreciative and good stewards of the funds that are given to our organization. Santee Santas offers something for everyone living in Santee. Families and seniors benefit from the holiday food boxes and the spirit we deliver. Children receive toys, books, and games hand-chosen and gift-wrapped expressly for each child. And our community volunteers relish the opportunity to give back during the season of giving. Our efforts have a positive winning effect for all involved. Santee Santas is completely, a completely volunteer organization. 100% of all our monies are received go directly to the recipients and the cost incurred to provide these items and services. We have been happy to answer the call for assistance from the city of Santee. We hope you will answer our call for help with funding for our future programs. Thank you.
Thank you, Tanya.
Any questions?
Next speaker I have is Rebecca Rader.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council Members. My name is Rebecca Rader. I'm here tonight from Voices for Children. We are the CASA organization of San Diego County. That's court-appointed special advocates. And we train volunteers, just average citizens. They go through 35 hours of training, and they're matched with a child in foster care. And then, a lot of magic happens. They research their lives, they make sure that they're doing well in school, that they're happy. These kids have been through a lot of trauma. And in the coming year, or so far this year, there are about 35 children in Santee that, that we've served. I want to thank you for the funding that you've given us in the past, and I hope that you will consider our requests for this year as well. You may never meet these children, but I want you to know you've changed their lives forever. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker I have is Dennis Martins.
Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council. The Santee Food Bank provides emergency food assistance to low-to-moderate income residents of Santee, as well as all who come to us. We provide a minimum two-day pack to clients once per calendar month. During calendar year 2023, food was provided to 19,120 Santee residents, resulting in an average of 101,593 clients per month. In addition to Santee, we also provide food to 10,189 individuals who are not Santee residents. This has resulted in a grand total of 29,309 individuals who benefited from our organization in 2023. The purpose of the Santee Food Bank is to provide food, help to those in need of assistance. We endeavor to provide food to everyone who comes to us for insistence. Our focus has always been to provide food to the residents of Santee. However, in 2020, we became a super pantry for the San Diego Food Bank, and as such, we also provide food to those who do not reside in Santee. Our dedicated all-volunteer staff gives over 18,000 hours of their time every year. Our small team of three drivers use their personal vehicles to pick up donations from locally grocery stores and deliver to our site six days a week. In addition, the Board of Directors donates hundreds of hours networking with community, applying for grants, and providing oversight for the daily operations. We are open every Wednesday, Friday, and Saturday from 8:00 to 11:00 to su, to serve as a food pantry. We also distribute government commodities on the third Tuesday of each month. The commodity program provides food of an average of 200 households each month. Additionally, we partner with Sunrise Church to deliver food to an average of 50 households of homebound individuals. The Santee Food Bank continues to be a nonprofit under operating a 501(c)(3). Established in 1988 and incorporated in 1990, the Santee Food Bank distributes food to everyone who comes to us. Our organization has been receiving CDBG funding since 2007. In these 17 years, the funding continued to help us pay our utility bills, liability, insurance, rent, and equipment, maintenance, and repairs. Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis.
Next speaker I have is Zach Clark.
Dear the city of Santee, thank you so much for the honor and opportunity to present in front of you today. My name is Zach Clark, founder and executive director of the Homeward Project. My journey began living in downtown San Francisco as a student for the past four years. Upon moving back to Los Angeles this past summer and scaling up the program into the Homeward Project, we have a goal of delivering 1,500 makeshift travelers across 15 cities in California this year. You might be wondering what a makeshift traveler is. Our makeshift traveler is a backpack we spent 18 months developing specifically for individuals experiencing homelessness. This hard-shell backpack has a solar panel, as nearly 70% of those experiencing homelessness utilize cell phones to connect with loved ones and access critical services. We also include a variety of other sustainable, multi-use items like a sleeping bag, a radio, flashlight, rain jacket, and much more. We like to think that it is the last backpack someone experiencing homelessness will ever need. I'm present here today kindly requesting $5,000 to support the delivery of 50 makeshift travelers as a pilot in the city of Santee. We are currently a volunteer-based organization and student-led, and we're delivering our makeshift traveler at cost of $100 to prove the concept. We had some great results from our pilot of 500 makeshift travelers in the Bay Area last year, including 65% of recipients reporting increased access to housing appointments and healthcare appointments, 25% reporting an increased connection with their family and loved ones, and 37% reporting transition into shelter or an interim housing program within one month of receiving the pack. We are excited to have received recent grant support from the Tegna Community Foundation in San Diego and the San Marcos Community Foundation in San Marcos to help grow our program in San Diego County this year. If given the opportunity, we would love to expand these efforts and partnership with the city of Santee. Thank you so much for the time, and we look forward to potentially changing lives together. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Do you have a question?
What, can you hold that up again?
Sure.
Okay. What, who hands those out when you make them?
Yeah, so we do distributions with our volunteer team, and then when we expand to new areas such as Santee, we partner with local organizations to distribute them.
Have you talked to any yet?
We have not.
Okay, we have a homeless meeting, task force meeting, Tuesday. I don't know if you're going to be in the area or have somebody in the area, but it might be a good idea to show up to that and talk to them because those are the, Mayor and I are on that. It's, we have a path there, we have East County Transitional Living, and a lot of other people show up at that, too, so.
Great.
We'd like to see it.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thanks, Zach.
The next speaker I have is Tim Ray.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm Tim Ray from Meals on Wheels East County. And first of all, I just want to thank you all for the last 13 years of supporting Meals on Wheels and recognizing the importance of Meals on Wheels in the community. Meals on Wheels were more than a meal. We provide a healthy meal to our clients, but without the dedication and the care of our volunteers. Our clients are isolated, and it's our, through our volunteers that they actually get a chance to engage with someone. Many of them have no family, no friends, or no neighbors. So, we are respectfully asking for $5,000 this year to assist with the food and packaging costs for 97 Santee residents. We couldn't do it without you guys. We rely heavily certainly on grants, fundraising, as well as donations. So, I thank you for your time. Any questions?
Thanks, Tim.
Great, appreciate it. Thank you.
Final speaker I have is Fred Lindell.
Thank you. I thank you, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council Members for allowing us to come before you to request these funds to do some enhancements to one of our homes here in Santee. Home of Guiding Hands has 27 homes throughout East County. This home is here in Santee, just off of Magnolia, between Braverman and Mass Boulevard. Six gentlemen live in this house, aged, between the ages of 38 and 58. They require 24-hour care and assistance to be able to do all the things that they need to be able to do during the course of the day. And there are about 10 staff. Five staff work within a 24-hour period. They help with just daily living skills, getting them up, feeding them, bathing them. And then, they all go to work from about 9:00 to about 3:00 o'clock throughout East County. This project will, that we're asking for funds, will do two things for this, for Regina's Court. See, we, in your handout is the front of the house, an area, an aerial of the existing property, and then the last page is what it is that we're seeking these funds for. One is for an ADA path that goes from the back of the house to the front of the house. And then, the second part of it is to enhance the front yard with turf and DG. Regina's Court has a very small backyard, just about the size of the patio. There's not much more. The gentlemen like to go into the front yard, and they utilize that as their view to the city before them. So, that's why we wanted to be able to put all of that in the front. The benefits of the path is that the house has one existing path that's on the east side of the house that goes out one way. This not only will be able to allow the individuals to go directly to the front yard, but during an emergency, it provides a second opportunity for the staff and the gentlemen to be able to get out to the front of the house. That's all I have. I have a lot more to say, but do you have any questions about Regina's Court and/or HGH?
I do have one quick question.
Yes, sir.
Because you're talking about ADA paths. Do you have wheelchair-bound folks there that are living there?
Some of the individuals need intermittent wheelchairs, so they'll, they're able to ambulate with assistance, and then at times, they just start, I've had enough, I'm, I'm, I'm happy here.
And do they also, some of them maybe use a walker or canes?
So, a majority of the folks just require assistance with the hand, and they more shuffle very slowly. Some have some minor visual impairments and, but to kind of ensure, especially on that west side of the house, it's all dirt right now. And so, like during the last couple of weeks with all the rain, it just turned into mud.
Perfect analogy with that. Turning to mud, that really makes it even harder on people that have disabilities.
Correct.
So, I appreciate you coming in today and talking to us and answering those questions. Anybody else?
My pleasure.
Yeah, did you get an actual bid on this job?
Yes, it's just under $50,000.
Do you have any, is, did you submit that to anybody, or can we see it?
I did not, I did not bring it. But part of that, part of what we're also doing is raising the additional funds. We already started.
Saw that.
Yeah. And during Giving Tuesday.
Okay. All right, thank you. I'd like to see it if it's available.
Yes, sir.
If that's possible.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
No further speakers, sir.
Great. Questions from council, statements or anything? All right, great.
I do have one for Bill.
Yes.
Do you know how, how soon the Habitat for Humanity Homes will be built that we approved? Will it be built within the next fiscal year?
I don't.
Yeah, I think right now, we're looking at 2025.
Okay.
Yeah.
If they were built, would they, would people purchasing those homes qualify for the Fair Housing Grant program that we have?
Well, the fair, the, so CSA San Diego, who unfortunately isn't here tonight, is our fair housing provider, so they provide services in compliance with the Fair Housing Act, and they have the ability to serve anyone, but like if someone looking for a home, if I hope I'm answering this correctly, wouldn't seek a grant for, to get into the Habitat Homes? If that's what you're asking.
Are you referring to the home program earlier in their presentation? If they be, yeah, it would depend on whether, well, the income level of the person that was applying for it, and then the level or the cost of what that unit would be. Is that right, Bill?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Sorry if I confused you.
Sorry about that, yeah.
But I would assume that anybody eligible for a Habitat for Humanity home would probably meet those standards.
Yeah, you would assume that.
But I think the understanding was that those homes were already so heavily subsidized that they wouldn't require the addition of the grant funds. The issue with the grant funds program, or the down payment assistance program, is the income limits are so minimal that if you can qualify, if you qualify on the income side, you don't qualify for any home that exists in San Diego County, even with the down payment assistance. You basically have to have additional assistance from a family member or something of that nature and have no debt whatsoever in order to qualify. We, our area median income, it's got to be under 80%, under 80% for moderate, and then it's even less than that for, for low.
50.
Yeah, for, for, so, and that's where your down payment assistance comes from. It depends on how, where you are in the, in the area median income profile, as to how much assistance you qualify for and for what areas you are qualifying in, so.
That's why I asked about these particular homes, because I thought perhaps there would be some homes in Santee.
I think they're so heavily, or they're so heavily subsidized that it won't, it won't be an issue. If I, if I understand the program, understood the program correctly when it was presented, they're so heavily subsidized that we won't necessarily need to additionally subsidize them, and that those funds will hopefully, if rates come back down a little bit, because there was the other, that's the other caveat to it, is that not only are the prices of homes so high and the, and the desire for people to get into this, the other part of it is that you have 27, right now, 27% of all homes that are purchased in San Diego County are purchased cash. 27%. So, how do you, if you're, if you're trying to apply with a grant program, how you gonna, how you gonna beat out somebody that's paying cash? Number one. Number two, if you can, if you can fit in those guidelines, if you could have fit in those guidelines, that was probably when rates were in the fours and fives. Now, step into the sevens, and at, for a while, we were in the eights even. Add that together, it's just, it, with the, with the 80%. Diego region. So until the AMI goes up in San Diego and on top of that rates come down nationally, we're going to sit in this situation, but the funds still sit there, correct? They don't get, they don't get utilized anywhere else. They sit there. So when, when the market comes back into a normalized timeframe, you're going to see a lot more participation from that, and we'll see that program actually get utilized yet again. But right now, the last couple of years, it's just, well, last year and a half, it's just been out of reach for the vast majority of, most, you said five in all San Diego County. It's, you've got, you've got to be very round peg in a very round hole that just matches up perfectly. And unfortunately, that's just, this is not the general population today. It will come back around, though.
You're not passionate about it.
Thank you.
I just read, I read an article.
Yeah.
All right. Anything else? Okay.
I think we are looking for a motion on staff recommendation to continue the hearing so that we don't have to republish.
Oh, that's right.
Move staff recommendation.
Second.
Oh, a motion and second. Please vote.
Thank you.
Hold on a second. Big fingers dragging across the screen. Thanks, Bill.
Motion carries unanimously.
All right, that takes us to item number nine, which is Community Risk Assessment and Long Range Master Plan Staff Update on Achievements and Potential Funding Options. And we're going to go to Fire Chief first, or, okay. Chief?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, Honorable Members of the Council. Excuse my voice, I still don't have it back from Sunday.
I'm right there with you for a different reason, I'll bet.
Big win for the Chiefs.
Big loss for the Niners.
This is.
Remember when you used to be chief? Remember that?
That's pretty good. That's a pretty good one. This is continued business. This is an update on the Community Risk Assessment and Long Range Master Plan. This was, I gave an update on this last April. And at the conclusion of this, we'll, we'll be also presenting some options for funding for the remaining recommendations that have yet to be completed. As stated, we received this report in March of 2023. We started the process in the middle of 2022. A lot of information was required for us to arrive at the end of this report. And then, as I just mentioned, I gave an update on where we were four months in, just a month after receiving this report in April of 2023. I had placed the recommendations into these buckets. EMS system, programs, planning, apparatus, training, staffing, and infrastructure. And the corresponding numbers within the print, these are what aligned with the 27 recommendations. You'll notice that the top one in EMS system, there's two 18s. We realized that there was a typo in the actual recommendations for the report, and there were in fact two 18s. So instead of 26 numerical recommendations, there's actually 27. So completed items to date. And honestly, I have to give a lot of credit to this council for supporting a lot of items that have been brought forth over the last year. Most significant is the implementation of our EMT program. Put that one at the top. With that, we're able to deploy a mixed staffing model. We now have EMTs in addition to our paramedics. Although I put this as completed, it's completed per what the report says, but we have work still to be done. We still have work to be done on alleviating our call volume of our medic units, per se. We're a busy system. You've heard me say it before. But for the purposes of this report, we've made some significant progress, and you have had a hand in approving a couple of my recommendations. We've hired a nurse coordinator that is shared resource between Santee and Lakeside. We've hired a medical director, a shared resource for all of our central zone agencies. We hired an administrative battalion chief who is in charge of training and EMS. We married the EMS to the training, although that was not a recommendation in this report because of the need. With our EMS program, our EMT program that we implemented, we needed someone to assist with the management of these personnel, which now is 12 part-time EMTs and four full-time EMTs, so 16 additional personnel. There was several mentions of a need for normalizing some of our training, looking for alternative sites, and refocusing on our fire competencies. And thanks to some of the work of Deputy Fire Chief Bagley, we have really focused over the last year on our operational capabilities and core competencies. To the point where I actually, I got to mention, give a shout out to Jesse Fournier in the audience here. We're not just, we're not just tagging along in the central zone, we're leading the charge. And Jesse and Captain Thompson took it upon themselves to develop some curriculum. They deployed to our entire central zone agencies. They taught numerous classes over the months of January. And so, again, this refocusing on our operational competency has permeated our entire organizations, and we have amazing people doing amazing work. Thank you, Jesse, by the way. Additionally, we were able to update our mission and values last year, which was a great endeavor. Participation from our entire department, our entire department had the opportunity, and now we do have a new mission statement and value statement. Some items that are in progress, reduction of A-POT, which is our ambulance patient offload times. We put a lot of time and energy into this. We implemented billing of hospitals, the first in the county to do that. We have, I see it on multiple committees throughout the county trying to address this issue. It is now an objective of the county fire chiefs to address this and quantify what the impact is throughout our entire system. There is now legislation in place from the state of California, AB 40, that demands that there are some accountability measures, we haven't defined what those are, for hospitals with timelines of implementation in July of this year, and then some, we'll call it enforcement, in December of this year. So a lot of stuff is going on with A-POT, but I put on going because this is, this is going to be a long, long game battle. I was just looking at the numbers. AB 40 states that we need to get to 90% of the time having offload delays of less than 30%. That's the goal. Right now, as of today, 76%. So there is still a gap, and we still have several. Every single day, there are still ambulances waiting on the wall for over two hours, every single day throughout the county. So we've made progress. We'll continue to work on this, but it is ongoing. Increasing our WUII efforts. We submitted for the Hazard Mitigation Grant. We put in, and the council approved this, for a grant for another Type III engine that will be stationed at Station 5. We received our Type VI apparatus, which is a small-scale brush rig through the San Diego River Conservancy that was highlighted a couple of weeks ago. And in addition, emergency termination on the Forester Creek area that allows us to do some brush clearing efforts. And also, we have our Public Works, our CSD is involved in trying to assist with some clearing that we've done over the last few years. Replacing Engine 5. We put in for the replacement of one of our Type I engines, so we call it our Fire Engine, two years ago. But I made mention at a couple council meetings ago that the production timeline for a brand-new Fire Engine is approximately three to four years. So we're still waiting on that one. Implementation of a fire inspection program. Our three battalion chiefs, our shift battalion chiefs are now assigned to our facilities. They put a lot of time and energy to the best of their ability to make them habitable and to oversee that, make sure that we don't have any major safety violations. And we just completed our Class A fire inspections that we do annually, and our personnel knocked it out of the park. Greater focus on public education analysis, first responder cost recovery. I'm actively working with finance on DIF and strategic plan in progress. Training mannequin, this was an easy one. We're working with Lakeside on a potential grant. If that doesn't happen, we're going to, we're going to request use of our EMS funds from donations from our community. A couple of these items are not applicable, and it has to do with the contractor being a national-level contractor. And this might be a surprise, but there's some things that just can't be done in California. They're a little bit different. I know, I know. So one of the items, a couple of the items recommended was a cost-benefit analysis for medications and procedures. We really don't have that latitude. The law is the law. This is what we have to carry on our apparatus. This is what we're able to do. There are sometimes some deviations that are made allowable for temporary time periods. And there's pilot programs, such as the Community Paramedic Program, that has been being analyzed for multiple years at the state of California level. But we don't have the ability just to implement these programs. So two of them, fortunately, out of 27, not too bad. And then I'll move on to the items that have yet to be completed. Additional firefighters, replacement of Fire Station 4 and the addition of fire stations, although not specifically stated as a recommendation. If you look at some, read between the lines as far as allowing the normalizing of unit usage and improvement of overall response times, there's a lot of language about giving me the discretion to address this issue of decreasing our response times. And they don't specifically say you should have a station here, or here, or here. They just said you need to do something about it to improve your response times because you have a couple deficiencies. Replacement of Engine 205. We, these are expensive pieces of equipment, and we can't tackle everything all at once. So two years ago, we were successful in getting this in the budget. Last year, we were not. We'll try again this year and see what is available. But as stated, this is, it's four years likely from the time that we put in our order. Splitting fleet and identifying a new location. We've spoke about this before as well. Our current, the current status of our shop is pretty poor. There's no running water in that facility, and we have two mechanics that work there full-time. The capital improvement and replacement program, automated inventory control system, and a fire hydrant inspection program, that there's an asterisk by because Padre Dam is the entity that does our fire inspections. But it's a reminder to me, I need to engage with them on how we address this. I'm going to focus on two items that I've said many times, and not to beat this drum, but these are the most significant. Staffing, items one and two. The contractor highlighted that we are a little bit below national and western region standards. And I brought this up in some public forums about our staffing levels in 2001, which was 13 firefighters on our response apparatus, and our staffing in 2024. 23-plus years later, we still have the same number of firefighters on our response apparatus. Now, there are some nuances to this, because over the years, in the last 24 years, we have had supplemental staffing, and then we had non-supplemental staff. We were called constant minimum staffing, and then we've had supplemental staffing again. These are apples and oranges, though, and I need to highlight this point, because supplemental staffing does not impact the number of firefighters that arrives at your house on a daily basis. Supplemental staffing means that when someone calls out sick for overtime, they're injured, or we simply have vacancies, we allow our extra staff to fill those positions. It doesn't increase the number of firefighters I have on an engine. We have those three things that I just mentioned, people on annual leave, people out sick, people injured or vacancies, I should say four things, every single day in this fire department, every single day. So in theory, the idea of maybe having supplemental staffing should increase our effective firefighter force, it does not. It's very different than constant minimum staffing, which states on this day, every single day, on these apparatus, there'll be X number of firefighters. And so I say that just for full transparency, that there's some nuances to this, but the number of firefighters we have responding on engines is the same. It is the same. Our infrastructure. Our Fire Station 4 was rated as poor, and here's a picture of our shop. Steel Butler building with some roll-up doors, kind of scabbard electrical, no running water, no sewer. And they said that this is really not inhabitable, that it should not be used as a permanent structure. It is what it is. It is what it is, though, and we know this, we've been talking about it, and we're working to address it. We have been working to address these items. It's, it's worth noting, though, that we have had two operational fire stations since 1964. Our first fire station went into service in 1961. Our second fire station went into service in 1964. We have moved these fire stations. Station 1 is now what we call Station 4 on Cottonwood. Station 2 is now what we call Station 5 on Carlton Oaks. But there have been no increases in fire stations. We have two fire stations. And by only having these two locations to respond out of, I am hamstrung as far as what we can provide from a response standpoint. Those are the locations they respond from, this is where we can get in four minutes in this city. And AP Triton reported that we have these two gaps. We have a gap to the south, we have a gap to the north. And we shared this vision with this group a few times, that four fire stations will give us much better coverage, much better coverage, and we will be able to effectively respond and get on scene within four minutes. That will translate, I'm not trying to be hyperbolic here, it will translate to better outcomes for our citizens. Now, the order of operations has changed a little bit since the first time I presented this, because we have moved forward with some things. We've allocated funding for a temporary third fire station. We have allocated funding for the design of our third fire station, and this will be at the operations yard. I still will beat this drum forever, is that we do have identified need for increased staffing. But I'm also, I'm also very understanding of the fact that there's a finite amount of funds that we have available in the city, and that if we want to achieve all these grand plans, if we want to right-size this department, that we need to secure some additional funding, because these are pretty high-dollar infrastructure projects. If we do that, moving on to shop design and relocation, third station and shop rebuild, as I had mentioned, we have the money allocated for the design of our third station, but we don't have anything for the actual construction. Design of a fourth fire station, and then the building of a fourth fire station. I'm sorry, I skipped over, but Station 4, yeah, my bad. Station 4 designed, Station 4 build. Station 4 was built in 1972. Contractor stated that it's at the end of its useful life, and we know. The council is aware that that facility needs some, needs some work. And then moving on to those two items, the fourth fire stations. And the costs, these are today's dollars, and based on $1,400 per square foot for a brand-new fire station, based on our best guess of what it will cost for a shop, a fire engine, staffing, $55,450,000. Not new, I know I've presented this information before. I've updated some of the slides based upon some numbers that we have. But at this point, I'm going to hand it off to City Manager Marlene Best, and then she'll kick it back over to our Finance Director Heather Jennings.
Okay, thanks, Chief. My role in tonight's presentation is to talk about the various opportunities and options that the city has looked at to try to find ways to fund the infrastructure that the chief just outlined. As a city manager, when this was first presented, the city council said, okay, great, chief, go out, do what you can within your budget, get those accomplishments done. City manager, come up with a way, how do we finance the rest of this heavy-duty infrastructure? How do we get there? In looking at what our costs would be to build out, based upon the recommendations from the AP Triton Report, working at a goal of approximately $4.5 million a year to get all of those things completed in the domino effect of what the chief just outlined. And if we're going to do that outside of bake sales and collecting donations at pancake breakfasts, we're going to need a real plan, or we're going to need to look at some other opportunities. City staff have been informed and told that there may be some additional monies available at the County of San Diego to go towards public safety. Now, we've, we've heard about that, we've done some research on it, we would need some partners. There's perhaps some opportunities there, although I would say I think the county tries to make use of their dollars, and they're not going to want to give them up too easily. So that discussion could take a long time, a long, a protracted negotiation, and potentially some litigation, if in fact we can find those funds. So right now, we're not looking at that as a feasible opportunity to move forward. Citizens at home would say, hey, how come you can't just cut budgets elsewhere and come up with enough money to build all these stations? Well, if we were going to do that, we don't want to cut the public safety budget for fire and sheriff, of course, we want to keep our citizens safe. So the rest of the city budget would have to be reduced by over 20%. Since staff is the largest cost of any public agency, that means laying off a large portion of everybody who works for the city to be able to accomplish building new stations. That does not, in my opinion, serve this city well. Our citizens have come up with a lot of programs that they enjoy and they respect, they like to participate in. We have good services that we provide from all of our departments, and cutting them by 20%. and cutting them by 20% doesn't seem to make a lot of good sense, and I think we'd have a lot of revolt from our citizens if we tried to do that. Another way to look for monies, which everybody wants to look, is how come we can't get a grant? Why wouldn't we just go for a grant? Well, quite frankly, there's no grants available on the federal or state level to go after brick and mortar infrastructure for public safety facilities, whether it's a fire station, whether it's a shop, or whether it is a sheriff station even. There's not a grant available to do that. You can get some small grants for technology, and we have utilized those. We've got radios, we've done other types of things. You might get a dispatch, you know, computer, but it's not going to build the building. There's not a grant available to do that. Does the City of Santee and our fire department look for grants? Every single day. Every department does, and our fire department is no different. We utilize grants quite a bit. In fact, we've used grants to get a lot of services and new equipment and new apparatus that we've had. We use grants for training programs. So we utilize grants already a lot. There's just nothing out there that's going to help us build new buildings. That's just not going to get there for us or provide some of the additional funding for the staff that the chief outlined. The next source of funding that you could look at is SLMSA. SLMSA is, in short term, it's the replacement for CSA 69. However, the issue with SLMSA is those monies are for emergency medical only. They're not to provide general fire services, general fire support. Legally, we can't use SLMSA money to go buy a fire engine. We can't use SLMSA money to build new facilities for firefighters, only dealing with emergency medical services. So SLMSA is not a source to build new facilities for us. When you talk to citizens here in City of Santee, they say, well, you know, you're going to get new stores. How come, how come new stores, that's going to bring you new revenue? Why won't that help get us over the hump? So future economic development goes in spurts. It comes in bits and pieces, it comes over time, and it's not a guaranteed source that we could use to go after a loan to be able to build some of these facilities. Not unlike what you would do if a mortgage holder has their house and they want to go out and buy a car, they need a guaranteed source of income to be able to qualify to go purchase that vehicle. They're not going to be able to say, well, I'm paying my mortgage, and I think this month I got overtime, so I'm going to have enough to pay for a car loan, but next month, I'm not really sure, but month and a half from now, though, I'm going to have more, so that will work. You're not going to get a loan, you're not going to be able to finance construction of facilities based upon that information. Economic growth also, building new homes, building new retail, building new industrial facilities here in the city, has helped the city fund our operations going forward. So over the last 20, 40 years even, the city has grown to keep pace with our population and our services and our shopping and our dining and our industrial opportunities. Those increased revenues help the city keep pace with increased costs because news flash for all of our citizens, when you are all paying more, so is the city paying more. So counting on new economic growth isn't necessarily going to get us over the hump to get over $55 million worth of infrastructure. Everything costs more for us, staffing costs, electricity, utilities, just like everybody at home. And quite frankly, when you look at all of the smaller bits and pieces even for our operations, it costs us more annually just to put toilet paper in the city park restrooms. So every little thing costs more, and we do a really good job, I think, from our city council perspective and staff, to be able to manage those dollars. And we do it almost all the time with grants or small increases in other sources of funding, but none of it is going to be able to be counted on to be able to build new facilities. The next item is development impact fees. Commonly, everybody wants to know, well, can't you just have new growth come in and build new stations? Can't they take care of this issue? Legally, no, they cannot. Development impact fees are charged on a per-unit or per-building basis, based upon the new use that's going in those. They legally can, and we can require them and do require them to pay their fair share of what their impact is going forward. But we cannot legally ask a new homeowner to come in and help pay for a gap in fire stations that haven't been there for the last 20 years. They have to help pay going forward for their impact, not what was previously existing in the city before them. Another common way that people have said we could get new revenue is let's look at the TOT increase. For the citizens who aren't aware, TOT is a transient occupancy tax that is a tax that is charged on individuals who stay in some of our hospitality facilities here in the city, some of our hotels, Santee lakes, we get transient occupancy tax from those facilities. If we look, currently, our tax is at 10%. Between 10 and 12 is a common rate throughout San Diego County. If we were to look at, let's bump up our TOT, we'll go up to 12%. Based upon the amount we get a year, that's only going to give us maybe another $200,000. That's not quite going to get us to 4.5. So increasing TOT really is not a viable option to get new fire facilities, besides which, an increase in TOT has to go on a ballot and must be approved by 2/3 of the voters before you could make that, that action take place. The next thing that we've heard from citizens is, well, there's a fire benefit fee, can't we just increase that and make that happen? The fire benefit fee currently funds only about 9% of our fire department budget. So if we increase that, yes, it will certainly help. The rates right now is listed on the slide. You can see it's about $41 per residential unit and $492 for a commercial unit. If we wanted to be able to increase enough to cover the infrastructure costs alone for new fire facilities, you would have to raise that five times. That means a homeowner is going to go from $41 to over $200 a year. A business is going to go from nearly $500 to roughly $2,500 a year for their fire benefit fee. That's a huge increase for some of our smaller local businesses here. It's a big hit. Not only that, but to increase the fire benefit fee, you have to go to 2/3 vote by citizens and voters here in Santee to be able to make that happen. And even if we were to get that, it wouldn't be enough to cover for the staffing costs. So those brand-new facilities we could build would be boarded and shuttered because we wouldn't have enough money to put new firefighters in them. So in my position, I don't think that's a really viable option for us. The last item that I will bring up there is that it is a tax, if you will, that is paid only by property owners in the City of Santee. It's solely funded by people who own property in our city. If you're a renter or a tenant, your landowner may decide to pass that cost along to you as well, but it's solely funded on a property basis. The next item that we looked at was voter-approved bond issues or GO bond, a general obligation bond. Generally speaking, those bonds are based upon a valuation of, as the slide says, $22 per $100,000 assessment. So could we make that work? Potentially. $22 per 1,000 doesn't sound too bad, 100,000. But there would be issues because look at the price of most housing. We talked about housing costs earlier here today. You're looking at not $100,000, you're looking at 500,000, 600,000, 700,000, 800,000. So multiply five, six, seven, eight times that $22, and that's just for residential. On top of that, the home values and assessment values would be not quite equitable throughout the city. If you have a neighborhood with older homes with a resident who's lived there for the past 25 years, they haven't sold the home, hasn't changed hands, it's assessed still at the same value of what it was when that person bought that property. If, on the other hand, the property across the street has sold four or five times over the last 20 years, the increased value based upon the sale price of that home provides that you're going to have a difference, even though it's in the same neighborhood, you're going to have people paying different rates for this particular measure. It requires a supermajority, 2/3 of the voters would have to approve it. And again, it's still based upon being paid only by property owners within the City of Santee. So the pool of who's going to pay for these costs is very limited. The last item that staff looked at, which is a very common way to finance new facilities for public agencies across the state of California, is a local sales tax. There are nine cities in San Diego County, nine out of 18, half of the cities have an add-on sales tax. One of them has two. This would be a sales tax that's paid every time somebody purchases an item in the City of Santee. So visitors who are coming to Santee would also help to pay for their public safety costs. We have over a million visitors who come to our community annually, just in Santee Lakes and at the sportsplex. If those individuals came and purchased any items, they would be helping to pay for the public safety services to help them have a great time here in our city because we want them to stay, we want them to keep coming. In addition to those visitors, we also have people that come here for our special events, our concerts in the park, our hop down the bunny trail, all of those events that we have. A lot of people who come don't live in town, but they might purchase something and help pay for their costs. We have people that come here to shop, we have people that come here to dine, we have people that come here to hike. We also have people who come and work here, but who don't live here. So employees that come and work in Santee and purchase goods and services would also be available to help cover some of the costs of taking care of their public safety if there was, heaven forbid, some sort of accident or they had a health problem here in the community. So from a staff perspective, council, what I can tell you is we think this is the most realistic way to support debt service for new fire station infrastructure. We could also fund the operations of those new fire stations, which means the staffing that the chief spoke about earlier. If this is a special tax just for fire services, it does require 2/3 of the voters in Santee to support it. General taxes are easier to get, you could, to have those approved by 50 plus one, a simple majority throughout the community. Looking at a sales tax scenario, based upon your direction to me to figure out a way to get us over the hump and start this process, I authorized a report to be done looking at alternative scenarios for a sales tax option. And that's included in your packet, and our Finance Director Heather is going to go through that so that we can talk about what those options are. I want to stress for the community, because Santee TV people will look at this for the next several months, tonight, we are not asking the city council to take, to make a choice on whether or not we're going to fund any sort of efforts to look at, yes, let's place a sales tax on the ballot by the City Council of Santee. We are not at that level, there is no action required on the part of the council tonight. This is exploratory, it is informational, it is just so that we can look at how do we get something moving forward to provide positive public safety in the City of Santee, and what are our options to be able to fund that? There's no action required by the city council tonight. It's just informational. So Heather, I'm going to turn it back over to you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor and City Council members. So as Marlene was mentioning, I am going to walk through the report that we received from the financial consultant. This is the Fire Station Infrastructure Services Financing Analysis. The report was completed in December 2023. This is a comprehensive sales tax analysis prepared to determine what sales tax rate would be required to fund a bond initiative for the construction of the fire station infrastructure, along with the operation of the new facilities. So a little bit of background, Fire Station Infrastructure and Operations, this is divided into three phases. Phase 1A and Phase 1B are the new fire station and fleet center at the city operations yard. Phase 2 is Fire Station Four reconstruction, and Phase 3 is the fire station in Northern Santee. The total estimated cost for all of the infrastructure is about $54 million, and this is $20,23, with annual operating costs to include the addition of six firefighter paramedics at Station Four to man the squad vehicle, an addition of nine firefighter paramedics at the, at the new fire station in Northern Santee. Also included would be engine depreciation, maintenance, and materials and supplies. The calculation of the bond amount, so the bond amount that's listed in the report is about $69 million. So we have a CPI-inflated construction cost of about $59 million, and this is due to the, the timing of the, the construction of the projects. Included is the fires, our fire engine. And then also, it's a requirement of a bond issuance that you do have a fund reserve, and usually it's about 10%, and this, this reserve stays with the, the, the bond issuance until the very end, so the last payments are paid from the reserve. This is about 6.9 million. And then cost of issuance is usually about 2%, 1.4 million. This would be a 30-year term bond estimated at about 5% interest rate, and annual, this would produce an annual bond payment of about 4.5 million. So the, the annual, the sales tax calculation, so this, so sales tax was calculated or estimated based on taxable sales in the City of Santee divided by retail and food service square footage. So with that, the annual taxable sales per year is about $365 per square foot. The growth rate is estimated to be approximately two stores per year with an inflation factor of about 4.42%. Now, the inflation factor is an average of the last 13 years, that's the data that's available from CD TFA, which is the California Department of Fees and Taxes Administration, I believe. And so that was, that was the information available. I know that today, our inflation is lower, but this is an estimate. And then to the right there, the graphical presentation, that is just, just to show what, what a half-cent sales tax would look like as far as income generation. So we've got, in the first year, we generate a little over $5 million, and then by year 30, over $20 million. So in the report, there are six scenarios that are, that are presented. I'm going to go through the scenarios and talk about each one. Scenarios one and two include all the infrastructure, staffing, and operation costs. Scenario one is a quarter-cent sales tax. This, this does not bring in enough revenue to, to cover these costs. Scenario two is a half-cent sales tax. The sales tax generated in total is sufficient, but the cash flow is negative until year 18. And then Scenario three is a 3/4 cent sales tax, which has ample revenue, but probably more than is needed. So at this point, the city staff, city manager, fire chief, and myself, and the consultant reviewed the inputs of the calculation and came up with a new, kind of reorganized to develop something that would work. So Scenario four is also a half-cent sales tax. The revenue generated in total is sufficient and the cash flow is stable. What changed with Scenario four is staffing was phased, which caused, which resulted in operational savings. And what changed was the squad staffing from the reconstruction of Fire Station Four, once the new fire station, I'm sorry, the squad vehicle staffed at Fire Station Four is staffed by six firefighter paramedics. Once the Northern Santee Fire Station is built, those six firefighter paramedics would now move over and join three more firefighter paramedics and now have nine firefighter paramedics at Station, the Northern Fire Station. And then the, excuse me, the squad vehicle would, would cease, cease being staffed. And this resulted obviously in operational savings. You can see in the graph there, the blue is the sales tax revenue, the red is the debt service, and you can see it's steady all, all the way through the 30 years. And then you can see the, the operational costs, the first three years are low, and then they, they jump up there in, in the seventh year once, I think it's the seventh or the fourth, I guess, once the, the other fire station is built. Scenario five is also a half-cent sales tax. This is feasible, and there is ample revenue generated, but the Northern Santee Fire Station is not included in this. So it's, it does not include all of the infrastructure. It just includes the Phase One, which is Fire Station, the Fire Station and Fleet Center at the Ops Yard, and then the reconstruction of Fire Station Two, which would include the staffing of the squad vehicle. And then Scenario six is a, again, a half-cent sales tax, and again, ample revenue generated, but with this one, the Fire Station Four is not rebuilt. So all the scenarios that were studied are included in this report. And then city staff believes that Scenario four is the more, most realistic and provides the greatest benefit to the citizens of Santee. That benefit is that all the infrastructure is completed and it's all staffed. And that's the conclusion of the presentation.
I have two speakers. The first speaker is Mark Hartman.
Good evening. Trying to make it quick, I know it's Valentine's Day and a lot of information to digest, but I'd like to introduce myself. My name is Mark Hartman. I'm a Santee firefighter for anyone who does not know who I am, and I'm also the new president for the Santee Firefighters Association. So I just started this past January. I am new to this position. However, I'm not new to the city. I've had the privilege to grow up in Santee. I graduated from Santana High School, played baseball at Santee Pioneer Little League when it was at the Santee School District lot over there off of Mission Gorge, and spent many nights at, at the roller skate land. So among, I know many people in this room have seen the growth. So among, I know many people in this room have seen the growth in this city, and it's been a privilege to be able to watch that. But one of the things that has come to my attention, working as a Santee firefighter, is seeing that the fire department has not grown with the city. And I know that that's obviously a big topic for today. So what the Santee firefighters are trying to do is trying to solve that problem. I'd like to invite everybody today to go to our kickoff event and fundraiser, which will be at Jimmy's Restaurant on February 21st, next Wednesday. We're going to have a meet and greet from 5:00 to 6:00, which will be free to anyone who would like to be there. And from 6:00 to 9:00, we'll roll right into our kickoff fundraiser. You can learn about the initiative, talk to firefighters, enjoy drinks and appetizers, and even a raffle. And I know there's a lot of questions in regards to, to the tax initiative and what we're trying to do. And my advice is, is, is I, I still am learning a lot and trying to answer some of these questions. But my advice is to show up, ask the questions, and even if it's not support, but just to educate ourselves and, and try to come up with a solution for the city of Santee. You could start out by viewing our website, which is www.ProtexSanté.com, where you can sign up for the event, register, and yeah, we'd love to see you there. Thank you.
I have one question. That's the question I keep getting asked the most, and that is, when, when is your calendar available?
A calendar? Or our calendar? Soon.
Soon. All right. That's, that's all I keep hearing is, when is the, when is their calendar going to be available?
The next speaker is Patrick Henry.
Your Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. I apologize for that little, it might have seemed a little disjointed at first. I was supposed to speak first, so. Got a little order of operations there. My name's Patrick Henry. I'm a very loyal employee. I've been here for 15 years, born and raised in the East County. I love this city. I'm very thankful for my job. When I came here to work here, there were 200 people in the room, and they hired three of us. We waited six months after our chief's interview, and all top three individuals were still available. This is during the recession, and I've never forgotten that. We have a problem in this city. You know, we need infrastructure. We had, we need a small amount of staffing. Our city has done a great job over the years of balancing the budget aggressively, and that gives me ammunition to ask for a defined need, which is a citizens initiative, which is a special tax, half-cent sales tax with a 30-year sunset that's going to fund our infrastructure needs and our staffing needs. Very minimal staffing needs, which I actually believe our city could absorb right now, but you don't have anywhere to put them. We need to do this the right way. I have to put my name on this as a firefighter. I'm not a politician. I don't do this normally. I'm taking on this Herculean effort, and so is my team, of figuring out how we're going to put together a citizens initiative. It's going to cost us $300,000. I've exhausted the firefighters' entire life savings. Started with $87,000. I have to raise $300,000. I don't think there's anybody in this room that's raised $300,000. But we're willing to take this on because we want to do the right thing. We're doing that by making sure that we do a special tax. This is not for pay and benefits. This is not to pad any pensions. This is specifically earmarked for infrastructure and the small amount of staffing. And I feel very strongly that we need a citizens oversight committee, and we're going to write that into legislation. That citizens oversight committee is going to monitor the metrics. If the sales revenue is 6.8 million a year, great. If it's higher, let's move the sunset up. The citizens oversight committee can dissolve the sales tax measure at any point in time. We have to sell this to a conservative constituency because that's what I am, and that's what, that's what I represent. And the Santee firefighters, we want to do the right thing, and our motivation is retention. We've lost 17 firefighters in the past four to five years. 26 firefighters we have on the floor. That's 70% of our workforce has left for other departments.
No further speakers, sir.
Thank you. I'm going to start down here. Rob, you have some comments?
Sure. So I was actually, I was the one that fought the last sales tax initiative that our city thought about doing when I was president of the Chamber of Commerce. Keith wanted to do a sales tax initiative, and I fought it vigorously and came up with the whole San, Shop Santee and Save, and our revenue grew. I've, to say that I've been adamant about no new taxes, no new anything, no new increases in, in cost to our citizens over the last 13 years I've been here now would be an understatement. However, we've exhausted all resources. This is no longer, this is, this is not about going to our general fund so we can, we can fund pet projects, so we can fund the Pet the Cats program, or, you know, I Love Dogs program, or whatever that may, whatever our pet projects are. This is, this is for infrastructure. This is for public safety. This is for things that, you know, we used to be able to do with, with, oh gosh, the funds that, redevelopment funds. We used to be able to do this with redevelopment funds until Governor Brown took those away from us, and, and Governor Newsom decided, yeah, he ain't giving it back. So we lost millions and millions of dollars that were saved for new stations and, and station infrastructure rehabbing. And it, it was taken, it was literally taken from us almost overnight, until you were there. I mean, it was, it was, and, and if we didn't do it, the penalties on a daily basis were in the thousands of dollars. It was absurd the way it all went down, but there was literally nothing we could do about it. And Sean, you, you know, your staff tried to do everything they could, and, and any, any monies that ever could come back, we've, we've sought and fought for, but it's not coming back. The reality is, we are stuck with today's reality, and today's reality is that we cannot do it based on our property tax revenue. I don't think it's, I don't think it's, I don't think it's fair to just, once again, further burden the homeowners, the property owners, and make it even more difficult for those that are not yet homeowners and property owners in the city of Santee by putting it on just the backs of those that own homes. I think the only fair way, and because on top of that, our fired, our fire department shows up at the grocery store. Our fire department shows up at Costco. Our fire department shows up at our events, when somebody goes down, when somebody gets hurt, when somebody's in need. Our fire department's there, whether they're a citizen or not a citizen, our fire department is there. The only way, I, the only equitable way to finance this would be with a sales tax measure, and, because then everybody that shops in Santee, that plays in Santee, that does things in Santee, then, then they are actually contributing to that. And, and as a homeowner, if you, you know what, you think you're strapped, okay, you maybe, maybe you curb your spending a little bit. Maybe you're not going out so much, and I hate the fact that that may hurt some of our local businesses, but the reality is that there is, there sincerely is just, we've, we've looked at the seven ways from Sunday, guys. There is no other way to make this happen. I mean, we, we joke about bake sales. We joke about calendars. We, that's not a joke, because you guys actually did that, but. Who was on the cover, by the way? Who made the cover?
William Jen.
Congratulations on that. Sports Illustrated Man of the Year over there. So we, I mean, it's, it's, I mean, we joke about this, but the reality is, we're all actually doing some of these things to try and generate any darn dollar we possibly can to go towards these things. It's just, it's, it's something into the wind. And we, we actually have to, we, we can't just pretend anymore. We can't sit up here and be, sorry, politicians and, and just talk about, well, you know what, that's a good thing. We're going to, we're going to look into that. We're going to have a meeting about that. Where then we're going to have another meeting about that meeting and talk about another meeting after the meeting. We, we've got to, I mean, this is, it's got to happen. I get it, it's, you know, because we wouldn't do it. It's, it's now becoming a citizens initiative, but, you know, I'll, I'll be the one that is maybe the contrarian up here in this state. As much as I hate any sales tax increases, as much as I hate any of that stuff and have for so many years and fought against it, I don't see any other way. And good for you guys for stepping up and doing this. God bless you guys. I, I appreciate your efforts. I'll be behind you.
First, I, let's start with thanking the city manager and the staff. You guys, I know this was a hard ask to go out there and really look at how we can make this happen. And the chief, obviously, for the last year or so roughly, looking at really the assessments to our city and, and the standards of coverage service that we have is kind of our guiding document today. The recommendations you've gotten, obviously, from, from them, and obviously your expertise as, as being our fire chief and giving us these realities of where we are today, right? You know, we can only move forward, like Councilman McNally said, and there's a lot of tough decisions here, you know, for us to make here at the council and, and as a staff. But, you know, fundamentally, you guys heard me say over the last three years that we need a plan for some of the things that we haven't done in this city in the past. And two primary things are public safety and paving the roads. You know, we have not made a plan for these things over the last, you know, decade, two, three, you know, 40 years of, of our city.
We've made plans.
Sure. Call, call it what it is, but we don't have a plan to take care of these facilities, these staffing and the road maintenance. We've made significant strides in the last three years, and we've had real conversations. So that's what I do respect and thank you guys for, for making all that happen. You know, today's an informational only, you know, again, thank you to staff for, for bringing this to me. We got some tough decisions to make here in the city, so that's all I have to say right now.
Well, I, I'm kind of with the rest of the group. I don't really see an answer to this. I, I don't think we need to spend $55 million, but that's just my first personal opinion. I think we can get somewhere in between. Rob brought up Shop Santee and that a while back, you know, it's, and I always said Sante's where East County shops, because when you talk to people, they're coming from Alpine, they're coming from Campo sometimes, and they're coming from all over. And rather than burden the citizens, these people use our services too. So they're coming into town and they're using our services. A lot of times we see a lot of, the, the app that we get is Pulse Point, and we see what's, I see what's happening. I don't actually have the details of what's going on, and every hour of the day, just about, these firemen or paramedics are out on the street helping people. And so we have to make sure that we do back them up. We have to make sure that there's a way to back them up. Again, I don't necessarily agree with the whole 55 million. I think we can come somewhere in between, but I think we can grow into that if we need to. And I, I just don't see another way. We keep getting state mandates coming down here to the city, and they forget to send a check when they do that. And my answer is, when you're, when you're making a law, you need to attach a check to the top of that law. Well, unfortunately, our state doesn't do that. So we have to eat those expenses through a city. And what the chief is talking about, the 30-minute rule, that's a state law. Now, that's really the hospital's problem. The hospital was actually getting pretty close to that. But I've, see, I've, you see our firefighters that, I've, heck, I've been, I've been one of those persons sitting on the wall with the firefighters. On the other side, though, I was one in the, in the bed there waiting for something to happen. And that's a lot of time that we spend, and we need, we need the infrastructure to help. We need the people to help. We got to solve this problem, and that's something I think we need to work on.
My thought was $55 million was probably too low, just based on construction costs. So, but I, I appreciate all the.
Real quick, we just saw a 13% decrease in construction costs by the National Building Builders Association. So maybe we're going in the right direction?
Not in California. Can never say that right. Anyway, you know, I look at the city as a whole, and I appreciate Vice Mayor Trotter's comments about public safety and, and paving roads, but, you know, the city is much more than that. And the things that make a city attractive are all the other services that we provide as well, and they all need to be funded. So, you know, I, and I was happy to hear the city manager say that we're just, you know, not interested in cutting other departments by over 20% because we already run lean and mean as a city on, on all levels. And, and it's really important that we're fiscally responsible that way as a, as a city and a, and a council. But I, I, there's a point of diminishing returns with everything, and you don't get a business like Trader Joe's, which everybody said would never come to the city of Santee, to come to the city of Santee if we don't do the things that we're doing collectively now across the entire city. And, and that's every department. So I just want to make sure that I, I say that. And I, it was funny because somebody that doesn't even live in Santee called me, called me to congratulate us on, you know, bringing Trader Joe's into Santee, because it was one of those biggest jokes, right? They'll never come. And I said, oh, you know, we don't have anything to do with that. And, and he said, well, actually, you do. It's the way you run the city. You know, it's the way you direct the city, you know. Those are the things that make these kinds of businesses attractive. So I just wanted to say that, that I, I do think we're a well-run city. There's a lot of things that we do very, very well. But what I always focused on running Santee Lakes was making sure that, two priorities, safe and clean. And if you take those concepts to the broader picture of the city of Santee, and it's safe and clean, that attracts, you know, it, it, people want to shop here if it's safe and clean. They want to live here if it's safe and clean. They want to raise their families here. They want to recreate here. All those things happen when we focus on those core principles. And safe and clean, you know, our public safety is a big part of that. So I understand the need that, you know, the, the, the infrastructure to, to, to do deferred maintenance on buildings. There's a, there's also, again, a point of diminishing returns, and we've hit that on Fire Station 4 probably decades ago. And Fire Station 5 will probably not be far behind because now it's over 20 years old, right? 20 something? So I know we need to do something. I'm glad the firefighters, firefighter paramedics are taking that on to try to find a solution for that. I, I love the idea that you are being so fiscally conscious, I guess, of, you know, what we are as a city as well and what our constituents expect. I also like the, I, I mean, you know, you put 75, was it 75 cents? Or a quart of a? .75? You know, hey, that, that's a hard pill to swallow. And then the other point of diminishing returns on something like that, to Council, Council Member McNally's point is, Shop Santee doesn't become as attractive anymore if the sales tax is too high. So you have to find the sweet spot on something like that as well. I, when I received the report and went through it, all it did was make me have a lot more questions. So the staff has been working with me on that, and I don't have all the answers tonight, and I don't expect to have all the data that I asked for by tonight. So, and, and it's really, it's not so important to what we're discussing tonight, it's just for my knowledge. But I did want to say that one thing that I, I do have concern about, just in general, is services on the, at least ambulance service on the west, west end of Santee, when we look at the data and what the calls actually are and what they're for, you know, it's, it's ambulance services, the priority, or the, like, over 8% of the calls. And a lot of them happen on the, on District 3. We have a lot of seniors living in that area. And I just want to be assured that if Station 5 can't cover that in four minutes, even if we do everything on the wish list, that that area still gets served. And so if that means an ambulance-only station out there or something like that, I, I do want it to be considered while we're looking at this. And those are my comments.
Well, I want to thank the staff.
You know, Councilman McNally, she made some really good points when you talked about when Governor Brown took away the redevelopment agency money, also known as RDA. Back in 2002, '03, there was an initiative that was run in the state of California, and it was brought by most of the California cities. And it was to stop the taking away of money based on mandates. And Sean, I think you probably remember when we did that. I think it was Prop 1A or something. And it was very successful. And it basically said that the state government, if they have a mandate, they have to pay for it. And they actually found a loophole and quit paying for things. And then shortly after that, another proposition was brought, Proposition 22. And that was a proposition that said that, well, since the state's taking money for mandates and they don't pay for it, well, then they eventually have to pay it back and pay it back with interest. And they found a loophole or created a loophole in legislation saying, "Oh, no, we don't have to do that." Although it's still on the books that they still have to. And then two years ago, when we had that, I think it was like $100 billion budget surplus that, you know, got urinated away, we had gone to... The cities had gone to the state. California said, "We need you to pay back that $3 or $4 billion that you owe in back mandates." And they basically raised a middle finger to all the cities and said, "No, we're not giving that to you." So every city in this state, counties within this state, are struggling every day because of these mandates put on us by the state government. State government doesn't raise taxes necessarily on everybody. They haven't done that in many years. However, what they do is they force communities like ours to pay and pay and pay. And then we're the bad guys. We have to do something to get money, to make ends meet. We can't go out and get another job because this is not a job where you get paid for like that. What it is, it's a way to go out and ask your people that live in your community, the people visiting your community, to help out. Not that you don't help out enough, because good Lord knows we pay enough taxes. It's bad enough that the state of California created a law two years ago and said that because you make more money, you have to pay more for your electric bill now. They're trying to unwind that because they were not very intelligent about what they were doing. I don't want to pay taxes. I don't want to pay any more than I have to. But if I do have to pay taxes, I want to see what I'm getting for my money. I don't want it to go into some obscure account someplace where you think that you're getting something, but you never see it. If I build you a fire station, you know what? You're going to see you got a fire station. If I build you a second fire station, you're going to see that you got a fire station. And if I rebuild a rundown, dilapidated fire station more than 50 years old, you're going to see it. And you know when that ambulance, that fire truck comes to your house that it's going to be the best equipment that we can provide you? I don't want to ever have to tell a friend or a family member that, you know, it took too long for us to get there because we didn't have enough fire stations. Oh, you know, we didn't have all the equipment we needed on a truck to put out that fire. We weren't able to get out there and inspect so that you could have a safe place around your home? I don't want to have to tell anybody that. I don't think anybody else here does. You know, a fire department that does a job, just because that's their job, you can't take anything away from them. That's pride. That's commitment. That's loyalty. And you know what? We have an obligation as a community to support those who protect us, the people that serve us. Whether it's, you know, picking up somebody, taking them to the hospital because they shattered an arm or they went back and they took down their garnish around their house. You know, those are stories that play out across our nation, play out across our state and our communities. And the people that we serve deserve better, the best that we can give. And even though we can't count on future revenue sources from businesses or industry or things like that, we know they're coming. You know, this council, our staff has worked hard for many years. Pam White, our economic development manager, has been working hard for over 20 years to bring ideas in economic development to our city. We got involved in the International Council Shopping Centers over 20 years ago. And the reason why we have so many good businesses is because we learned by going to these places and taking classes about what it takes to make a city function and not go broke. When we were in COVID for the first year, we posted a $1.5 million budget surplus. The second year, a $6 million budget surplus. One-time revenues that could be spent, not necessarily on many of those things that we would like to have spent them on. But what we did, you know, and Vice Mayor Trotter led us on this, to get out there and put that extra money into roads because the roads were so bad. You know what? Firefighters have to drive over those roads every single day. They don't need to be bouncing around. You know, it's just something that we have to do. I'm very much in support of this. Now, I'm going to tell you that people in our community are going to hear from some people that are well-known for being on the radio, we'll say, and say that we are nothing more than a tax-and-spend community. We're a city council. Well, I'll tell you what. We've gone to that person that told us there are alternatives to funding, and we don't have to raise taxes. We don't have to do any of that stuff. And they were wrong, absolutely wrong. We sat down, we had meetings, myself, the city manager, finance manager. We had meetings. And we've gone to the county and looked for all those funding mechanisms that we were told were out there, and they don't exist. So when people will tell you that all you are is a bunch of tax-and-spend council members, it's because they have another agenda. And that personality right now just wants to be in the state government so he can have a title because he's never going to get anything done. We're doing the right thing. These firefighters, they stepped up. They're doing the right thing. And I support you 100%. And I'm going to continue to support you. I think that's all I have. Did you get everything you need out of this tonight, as far as direction or whatever?
Yes, sir, we did.
All right. I think Zuffman said, "Thank you very much, everybody, for your time and your patience."
Actually, you said "second jobs." I was thinking "Fuber?" Fire Uber? While they're going from place to place, we just jump on and...
They're already in Uber. They're taking people places.
I'm trying, guys, I'm trying. No idea is a bad idea, except maybe that one?
All right, that's going to take us to item... The next non-agenda public comment. Any speaker slips?
We have no speakers, sir.
Thank you very much. And city council reports. Go ahead, start down this side again. Rob?
Nothing from you, Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor?
Real quickly, I wanted to share with the community and you guys up here. Last, it was last Monday, we had the community coffee over at Pathways over District 4. And I had a survey. We took a survey of all the people there. We had 24 surveys brought back to us. And I'll share with you guys the information. It's kind of the, you know, top three issues within Santee. And number one was homeless issues. Number two was road maintenance. And number three was juvenile crimes. So just want to share with you guys. Yeah, not really, you know. But just want to share with you guys what, obviously, the citizens that were there had to say.
Mr. Mayor, I did forget one thing, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I just want to say real quick, thank you to our fire marshal. She's not here, but she is unfortunately moving on. Chris has done a wonderful job for us for years, and we're sorry to see her go. If she's watching, thank you for all the service you've provided for us over the years. Wish you nothing but the best in your new adventure. And yeah, thank you for just being a welcome sight for everybody that you walked into. And we're always looking for positive ways to make things happen instead of reasons to say no. We appreciate it, and so are businesses. Thank you.
Yes. You know, when you walk out the door and you're like, "Oh, I should have asked that question." Well, here's one for Carl. It's just a request. When you do bring back a paving presentation about what roads we should pave, in the chart, instead of just showing the year-over-year cost increases or how much we've spent, just how much we've spent year-over-year, can you also show what that translates into how much paving was actually done? I don't know if you show that by what measure you use for that, but I'd like to understand, like, what our dollars are actually doing and the historical on that. And then I do have... We had our SLMSA, Santee Lakeside Emergency Services Authority meeting last week. And Heather did a mid-year budget update. And so I just wanted to share a couple of things. Our overall expenses year-over-year have increased by 17%. And I think that shows the benefit of local control once again. Sorry, what? What did I say? I'm sorry. Revenue. Huge difference, sorry. Thank you, I'm looking at the... Yeah, thank you. Our overall revenue has increased by 17%. And what has reduced is our administrative expenses. So that's been cut in half, which is about $170,000 in savings on that line item alone. I also having local control. So just wanted to share those things. Thank you.
In the interest of time, I just wish everybody a happy Valentine's, what's left of it.
So in other words, you don't have anything to say? Okay, I just want to report that I did a... We had a Sandag meeting last week. It's pretty interesting, talking about the regional transportation plan. One of the big topics up there was the road usage and things of that nature, what we're going to do with, like, the Highway 52. I mean, we never stopped talking about that, 67, 78. But one of the things that we actually engaged in conversation with Caltrans about is the lack of cleanliness in their infrastructure system along highways where there are tributaries to different things, from creeks to rivers. And because a lot of flooding that took place happened because Caltrans failed to remove debris and other things that clog up the storm drains. And, you know, we were told, "Well, we work on that all the time." And, well, I don't know who's doing the work, but it didn't seem to matter. And so one of the things is that we had an issue here in Santee where, over by Al's Sporting Goods, you know, there's... People don't know this, but there's a portion of that waterway that's under the Caltrans jurisdiction. And they got that through the 125 construction for mitigation of species, vegetative species. Oh, if I can say that. Oh, no, I couldn't. And so that was actually... Hadn't been cleaned in a long time. They hadn't done any underbrush or invasive species cleaning and things of that nature. So that's one reason why our Forrester Creek rose so high because once it hit that, it started backing up. And it was running at a very high pace. And so we've had that discussion around the county. I made it very clear that we wanted that taken care of over there right away in case we have future heavy rains. And they seemed to be very responsive to that. I don't think they have a choice but to be responsive. And so we'll see what happens, see what happens. So we're there fighting for you. And all the freeways, though, they're, you know, they're going to be taken care of in the next couple of budget, you know, cycles. Well, at least that's what they tell you. Oh, you know, one thing that was very interesting is we talked about funding for transportation needs. And everything is always about the federal transportation, state transportation. All that money comes down and then goes out to the metropolitan planning organizations, which is what Sandag is. And so I raised this question that, you know, we are required to design everything from streets and roads to highways to rail and buses to reduce the environmental effects, you know, greenhouse gases. And so I threw out the question, since we have to take care of the environment as well as planned transportation, why don't we try and get money from the Environmental Protection Agency for taking care of their job when we do transportation issues? Nobody's ever talked about that before. And then something that I brought up was the San Diego County Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy, which almost nobody has heard about before. But that's an economic development issue. And since we have to make sure that people can move faster to and from work in an efficient manner, why don't we go after those economic development dollars also in order to plan for transportation? It's just one more or two more buckets of water. I mean, buckets of money. It's like water because it goes so fast. And so that's something that they're going to look into. I don't have a lot of hope for it personally because those agencies don't want to give out any money more than they have to. So but... So there's a lot of interesting things happening down there at Sandag, regardless of some of the inefficiencies that go on these days. The MTS will thank you. Which should be Sandag, just eliminate MTS altogether. So anyways, that's all I have. City manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of quick comments. I appreciate all of the efforts the staff has made over the last couple of weeks. We only had one area of town that really had some flooding for a short time, and that was on Mission Gorge. Woodside Avenue's got some issues, but when there's a really heavy downpour, it's a little bit nasty out there, but it drains off pretty quick. Our team has been out there really working hard to make sure that we are taking care of what Caltrans doesn't take care of on their property. Our staff team has been doing that. We do anticipate we're going to get some more rain. That's what they're advertising, is going to come back in on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. So everybody, take care, be safe. And our team is going to be out there trying to protect you in that way also. If you have an opportunity before that rain comes, Saturday, this Saturday, the 17th, is Fido Fest. It's the funnest event, if you like dogs, that you will ever go to. It is at Town Center Community Park. It's 11 o'clock to 3:00. You will see more species, more breeds, more colors, more outfits, more trained dogs, more, you know, adopt a dog. Anything you want to know about dogs, we got it. So if you're interested, I would encourage everybody to come. It's free. You can bring your dog and take him around, and he can make a whole bunch of new friends. Just thank you very much, everybody, and Happy Valentine's Day.
Sean?
Your report.
Okay. One more thing I do want to mention is that there's a petition circulating around the state. It's called the Homeless Drug Addiction and Theft Recovery Act. And if you see somebody collecting signatures to that, what it's designed to do is pretty much reverse the effects of Proposition 47 that was created a few years ago, which reduced all of the... Pretty much the reason for prosecuting anybody for stealing. That's now we have... You see the smash and grabs all the time now on TV, the organized criminal activity where a dozen people go in a store where there's no way to prosecute those people. And people are using that to fund drugs and other things. And this act will overturn most of that. And so if you see that, go out there and sign that petition because we need that to help us to bring back some control over lawlessness in our state. That's it. And that takes us to closed session, which is a public employee performance evaluation. Good night, everybody. Good night, everybody. Okay, are we ready to go live? All right. Okay, let the record reflect that we met in closed session regarding a performance evaluation. No action was taken and direction was given to staff. This meeting is now adjourned.